Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council, held because of the Labor Day holiday this Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Instead of our typical Monday, it's after 7:30 p.m. We're also trying to stream live on YouTube. So, Ms. DiPaolo has said she has that up and running. And hopefully you can hear us, Ms. Weller, because I know you have done the mics here. Our next meeting will be Monday, September 20th, 2021. Ms. DiPaolo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bastancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
Well, it's nice to see you all after our two-month hiatus, although we did have two special meetings. So, seeing you both once a month, I didn't forget what you looked like. But I welcome you and it's good to see you. I hope you had a good summer, hot as it was, wet as it was, and maybe this fall will be like what it's been the last couple of weeks. So anyways, glad to see you. Since we have a quorum, we can pass things by suspending the rules this evening. Our agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I would invite you to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with the City Council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have minutes from the special meeting held on August 11th, 2021, waiting for approval, so I would entertain a motion for approval of those minutes. I see Mr. Silvestri made a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All in favor of approving the August 11th, 2021 special meeting minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and those minutes will be approved. Mayor, welcome. Hopefully, it's been a good summer for you and your family, and welcome this evening.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke, and it has been a really nice summer. I appreciate you asking. Welcome, council members. It's so nice to be back in the normal quarters for us, and hopefully, this is a sign to the times to come. Just some things to bring you up to speed on and also share with our public through the Zoom aspect. As Mr. Biden-Dyke said, we had two special meetings this summer over summer break. They both were necessary, and our first one was on July 14th to approve two CRA requests, one for a restaurant and apartments on East Liberty Street by Liberty Bell and Mariola Italian LLC, and these are going to be beside Muddy's. The second was for Centerra Co-op on Old West Lincoln Way across from the fairgrounds. And then on August 11th, we needed to accept the One Ohio Settlement offer on the opioid lawsuit, and the council did approve that, and I believe we got it submitted in time to be a part of that. So I'm glad we were able to contain it to just two special meetings. We try not to call those at all, but sometimes in necessity it dictates. Our community is regaining some normalcy. On July 22nd, Main Street held its taste of downtown. Hopefully, some of you were able to attend. I'm afraid I was on vacation at the time, so I didn't get to get to that. And then on July 24th, the dedication of the General David Worcester statue took place. So I know that, Mr. Biden-Dyke, I think you said some kind words for the group there and helped to make that happen in all of council. So that's a nice tribute to the guy that we named our city after. On August the 2nd, Ian H. Ace Hardware announced that they were going to move into the Quimby Building, where the old Everything Rubbermaid store was located. So that fills a space that could have been very noticeable if it was standing empty. So we're thrilled that that happened, and I know some people in this room are also very thrilled that he has a tenant in that building now. On August the 12th, the census figures were released of 27,232 people living in the city of Worcester. That was a number I hope to crest over with this census. We had been at 26,800 or so, and I was hoping we would take over the 27,000 mark, just a pet desire of mine to get that number. With that, our city grew at 4.6% population in the 10 years between the 2010 and 2020 census. Now, you council members get to decide how our wards are constructed, because now the new numbers are in. Our chart says that you need to try to balance the wards in relation to each other. We've done it numerous times before, and some years, there wasn't enough of a difference between the, no realignment was done. So that's truly up to all of you sitting up there on that dais. Wayne County Fair begins this weekend, September 11th, with a flag-raising ceremony on our community's new flagpole by the Worcester Rotary Club. If you haven't seen that yet, it's pretty big. So should be a lot of fun. We held or had a normal monthly meetings of different boards throughout the two-month hiatus, Worcester Community Hospital, Main Street, Wayne Economic Development Council, our dispatch, Co-op, or government body, and Worcester Growth and City Division. So just pretty well got back to normalcy here throughout the summer. The COVID virus status, I know everybody's still interested in. Worcester Community Hospital is pretty busy right now, but it's not overwhelmed. There've been some rumors that have floated through the community that we're overwhelmed in certain areas, and that's just not the case. We've got plenty of room, and we're hoping it stays that way. Right now, the Worcester Community Hospital census is about one-half to three-quarters of the maximum COVID patients that have been hospitalized there on a daily basis since the start of 2020, when this whole COVID thing started. The Delta variant has a stronger spread, but it doesn't seem as strong as a sickness to most people. Positivity rate is 12.8%, with around 57 new cases per day right now in Wayne County. We have had some very sick people in Worcester Community Hospital with this Delta variant, and we have had some deaths. So it is not something to be taken lightly, but it's also not something to hide our heads in the sand with either, because it is just a virus, and we do have some things to fight it. If you want good updates to pass on to people in your part of the community, if you get questions, actually, Worcester Community Hospital has a very good forum, and it's updated daily on that. It is worstherhospital.org, and under that, on the first screen, there'll be a little red tab at the top. It says COVID-19. If you click on that, then you can get the latest and greatest. It has graphs and everything. It ties together with the state website for all of the states. So if people ask you how are things going, you can refer them to that, because it is the most current. Our medical personnel are concerned about the potential spread that could happen by the crowds at the Wayne County Fair. So please keep this in mind yourselves and in our general public when you visit the fair. I do still tell people, make sure you visit the fair. It is really a wonderful thing for our community, but just be conscious of any type of exposures. With that, council has a very long agenda tonight, and with petition, two public hearings, and 16 pieces of legislation. So I'll hand it back to you, President Biden-Dyke, and let you folks move her forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a petition for liquor license by Bob Evans Restaurants there on Burbank Road. If you would, please, Ms. DiPaolo, read it.
It's Ohio Division of Liquor Control application for Bob Evans Restaurants LLC, doing business as Bob Evans Restaurant Number 2036-3660 Burbank Road, Worcester, Ohio 44691. They're applying for a D1.
We have three options. We can ask for a hearing here in the county seat, which would be Worcester, ask for a hearing on the petition down in Columbus, or we can waive the hearing. What's your pleasure?
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
All right. If you would, please let the Department of Liquor Control know we waived the hearing. We have two people have signed up to talk on the legislative agenda, both on Oak Hill Development. And you're welcome to speak now, or we are having a public hearing, and I don't know if you would prefer to wait until the public hearing to express what you wish to say. So I don't want to squelch your opportunity to speak now, but you certainly will have an opportunity when the public hearing is going to be held here, right after we get done with committee reports, which there are none. But so whatever you would like. I know I saw Ms. Zimmerley nodding her head. She'll wait till the public hearing.
Is that what people normally do?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have no committee reports, but we do have, we'll have two public hearings. They'll both be held separately by Mr. Sanders. And I guess I will turn this over to you, Mr. Sanders, on these two rezonings.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. Our first public hearing this evening, which will open, is regarding rezoning of 3146 Oak Hill Road. And is there someone, is there the applicant here or someone to speak for the rezone?
John, you might need to turn the mic on.
Oh, I did.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Churchill, 225 North Market Street, here on behalf of the applicant. The rezoning request here is quite simple. It's a request to resound the plan question from R1, R2. The sole purpose for that is that R2 solidifies smaller lots. The development in question would call for smaller lots, and the dimensions of the number of minimum square feet permitted, the minimum lot building width, and the minimum frontage are all just slightly lower on R2, which makes this project doable. It's interesting to note that on this particular site, the density overall would still meet R1 standards, because there's quite a bit of land towards the rear of the parcel that can't be built on, because it's either too hilly or wooded, or there's a ravine that flows through there also that can't be built on. So overall, the density would be the same as R1, but the individual lots that are proposed would not work in R1. And I think we all know there's a severe housing problem in Worcester right now. This won't completely solve it, but it would help. And it's a nice piece of property that is appropriate for this use. There's a lot more to do. The request here is by somebody who just has the property under option. They hope to purchase it, assuming all the other pieces fall into place. One of the things that will make this possible is that it is a part, not the entirety, but a part of a district that the city is proposing for a TIF, tax increment financing. And that, if that happens, that will make this project economically viable. It's probably not without that. The market is such that we think the slightly smaller lots, but in a more open setting, which this would be, is what the market would want. The proposed developer thinks that these houses will sell very fast, because it's what people are asking for at this time in the price range that this would be. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, the representatives. All local folks doing the development. Justin Starland is representing that group here tonight, if you have any questions about the specifics of the proposed development. But the only issue here is just the zoning. Has been unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, and your materials show a favorable recommendation from the planning staff of the city also. So we think it really is a win-win for the city, and we think it's going to be leading to a nice project, we hope. Unless there are any other questions, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Churchill.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for this proposed zoning change?
My name is Smara Zimmerley, and I'm here tonight representing the Worcester Area Chamber of Commerce. As many of you know, we have been in conversations the last couple of years about the housing needs in our community. Our city admin team has done a great job in recruiting new business and also retaining the ones that we have, along with our local organizations that have helped to do that. And we continue to hear from all of our local employers that workforce is an issue. And when they do find people, they're having to move to neighboring communities, because we don't have housing options for them, so they consider them flight risks. So we just want to applaud the group for putting this project together and hope that the city council members will approve it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for the rezoning legislation? Is there anyone to speak against the rezoning?
I'm Michelle Neely, and I just have a question, and maybe it's been done. Has there been a traffic study done, or will there be one, with the impact the traffic flow will have in that already congested area?
The traffic study would be a requirement when they submit a plan to the planning.
Okay. And then if I heard the gentleman there speak properly, he said that rezoning it from, I believe he said, R1 to R2 serves the same purpose. So if it serves the same purpose, what's the point in rezoning? Smaller lots, more houses?
Small, yes, exactly. What happens is R1, the lot width, is 70 feet. And R2, the lot width is 50 feet. The minimum square footage on the lot in R1 is 8,700 square feet. R2, it's 6,500 square feet.
Okay. And the way it looks, when I saw it in the paper, there's no exit to McAnxburg Road. It's all on Oak Hill, the current planning?
First phase.
First phase?
The first phase. There's basically, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Starland, but as I remember the design, there's actually a street that actually is going off to the north. So as the phases, as the next phase would be constructed, then there would be a secondary exit that would be off of, that would be not just on Oak Hill.
To Milltown or Oak Hill? Both on Oak Hill. Okay. Okay. That's what I asked. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak against the rezoning of 3146 Oak Hill Road? If not, we'll close this public hearing related to the rezoning, and we'll move on to the second public hearing, which is the rezoning request on three parcels, 626 Glen Avenue, 348 Wood Street, and parcel number 64-02717.000 on West Larwell Street. And I see Mr. Long's here to speak for it, so proceed.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Matthew Long. My business address is 225 North Market Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of FNB Properties and joined by its principal, Adam Schwederman. We're very excited about the prospect of bringing the zoning request to you, as it's an area, even in my extensive involvement with downtown, that I never thought would be subject to a potential redevelopment opportunity. And that's the area on West Liberty Street, proximate to the Larwell area. And very specifically, in this instance, we're looking at expanding the C2 district to accompany a few underutilized resident RT-zoned lots in order to facilitate the existing building infrastructure. This is listed tonight as three different ordinances, but for purposes of my analysis, I'm considering them all one in the same. So out of background, FNB acquired the old Swift Auto Parts property in 2018, which at that point was vacant and legacy underutilized commercial property adjacent to our core downtown. And certainly, it was not in spectacular condition. There was a desire to redevelop that property for productive use within the C2 district, but the zoning code has since changed a variety of times since that property was originally developed. There's certainly more owner's parking and screening and buffering requirements that exist today. So one of the early efforts FNB made was to acquire vacant or underutilized adjacent property to expand the footprint available for future development, again, in the interest of protecting its neighbors. And that's the primary purpose of this application. The C2 district that it's in is almost an afterthought, if you look at it in the map. On one side, it's buffered extensively by the fairgrounds and the fairgrounds community facility district, and then on the other side, it's sandwiched in with the RT district and areas that have historically been residential. And it almost feels like that corridor right along West Liberty is an afterthought created as to not create a lot of non-conforming uses within either of the other two adjacent districts. And to that end comes the need to work on the rezoning of this land into C2. And very specifically, as it sits, there are very few uses that could be made economically productive in the existing building infrastructure without adequate parking, again, and without adequate zoning and buffering. The lots that you see in question solve those two riddles in a way that allows, then, for the redevelopment of the existing buildings into a productive use. And I think it's worth keeping in mind that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It supports retail activity in pedestrian areas, especially ones that could foster outdoor seating and activities, and it encourages the infill development in underdeveloped or underutilized areas of town, as opposed to expanding our boundaries or having the zoning code act artificially to be able to suppress good development activities. And in this instance, we had both Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of this request. Now, we did have several neighbor concerns that came to Planning Commission. I'm not sure whether there would be any tonight or not, but I thought it's always worthwhile in this endeavor to address them upfront and acknowledge that we hope by this application to actually address a lot of the neighbors' concerns. I think as a first point, it's worth noting that doing nothing with regard to this request likely leads to continued vacancy and blight. So as we've stated above, these existing buildings are going to be hard to put into service without additional land, without additional parking. We certainly heard concerns from the adjacent commercial uses that without adequate parking, that there would be a burden on their adjacent properties, that without appropriate parking on-site for development by FNB, that those folks that would come, customers and guests, might migrate into other parking lots. And that's a valid concern, again, that's solved by the addition of land that facilitates compliant parking. Likewise, several of the adjacent residential neighbors, I think, are always appropriately concerned at what adjacent commercial development will do to their properties. But again, the planning and zoning code acts in their favor. The code specifically deals with instances where we have residential districts and commercial districts abut, and this, any future development would still have to go before Planning Commission and the other appropriate bodies to satisfy those requirements, provide adequate buffering and zoning. Finally, with regard to the residential neighbors, it's worth keeping in mind that this is already a commercial district adjacent to many of these uses. So if it's a question of whether they're going to have commercial in the neighborhood, that's already been answered. This is an existing commercial area, and this is simply a small expansion to that existing commercial area. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have, and thank you for your consideration of this proposal.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for this rezoning request? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak against the rezoning request? All right. Well, with that, we will say that we will close this public hearing and say that we have completed it. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, consider public hearings on the rezoning of 31, I think it's, the correct address is 46 Oak Hill Road, has been had, and likewise, the public hearing on the rezoning of three parcels consisting of 626 Glen Avenue, 348 Wood Street, and the parcel 64-02717.00 on West Larwell Street. I will also point out by rezoning these, my guess is that will increase the tax being generated by the real estate tax as opposed to what the three mobile homes were generating here in the previous years. So that's always a good thing as well. We have no unfinished business, so that will allow us to go right into new business. And as everyone has probably noted, that we have a number of items on the agenda this evening. And I think this is the first time where my little script has gone into three pages. I just hope that we're all awake by the time we get to the last part. So the first item is ordinance number 2021-26. It is slated for three readings. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders, but Ms. DiPaolo, it's been a while, but could you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2021-26, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, so as to amend the zoning map at certain parcels on Oak Hill Road.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we listened to previously at the public hearing, we have a request for the rezoning on the 3146 Oak Hill Road, which is 41.44 acres from R1 to R2. The request, as stated, is being made to allow for a higher, greater number of housing units on the assigned property. And really, the request is really being, is being asked for, it's just the simple fact that it becomes, it makes the property much more marketable for the potential, for the potential project. As was stated previously, it has been, it was unanimously approved by Planning Commission, and at this point, the city Planning and Zoning Group has, in fact, approved it based on the fact that it is appropriate, appropriate request in terms of the city codes. And with that, since this seems fairly straightforward to me, I would just motion that we would suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right. A motion by Mr. Sanders to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
No.
Warden?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
So we'll keep it on the first reading.
Can I ask a quick question to Mr. Long? Mr. Long, hi. Do you have a range of prices?
Well, that's Mr. Drusil. Oh, Mr. Drusil, I'm sorry. This is his gig.
That's Mr. Drusil's legislation.
You can answer if you want, Matt.
He's a good-looking guy.
Well, we've just started. We've already got him mixed up. In terms of the specifics of the development, if I could, I'd defer to Mr. Starland.
I was just curious, so what kind of price ranges are we looking at for this development?
Yeah, depending on the model and construction prices, as you know, look at lumber, right? It's fallen 75% over the last two and a half months. So estimates are 235, up to mid-300s, depending on where you're at in the development.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I'd just like to say, is it okay if I?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. I don't know if you're done. Ms. Neely brought up a good point. I know that traffic, and we've kind of addressed that with some roundabouts that are going to be placed in the area, but considering a residential development of 91 lots, which I believe are sort of being marketed to an elderly population, not only does that bring in, well, we'll say between 90 and 180 vehicles approximately just of the residents in that neighborhood, but also the added service and emergency vehicles that such a neighborhood might bring in with the incredibly bad congestion that we're already dealing with there and talk of building another development and putting the entire school. I understand everything is up in the air right now, but that's definitely a concern for me. I think that's a concern for a lot of people. People avoid that area already, and that's before there's a large development like this going in. So I'd really like to hear a concrete plan. Are we going to talk about widening the roadway? I know that some new power lines were just put in up there, which might make that a bit more difficult. So I'm very concerned for the traffic, and yeah, that's why I would like to hear a little bit more from anyone before I vote on this.
Density was a concern of mine as well. But the other thing, I mean, if we're going to start chopping lots down, where does that end? Do you want to do the next phase of somewhere else in the city? Are you going to? I mean, we're setting a precedent, so.
Well, I mean, if I may just counter a little bit there, Mr. Kevin, I mean, we do have zoning requirements that allows for R2 that already exist within the city.
But back again to what I just said, Mr. Sanders, the density.
Let me see if I can. Actually, I think from a planning perspective, I like to see denser neighborhoods. It helps control sprawl, which we all know is a big problem in urban areas now. We're approaching into high-value agricultural levels, and of course, we know as larger as the city gets, we have more expenses, you know, road, police, fire, all those come into account when you start expanding the city. So actually, I think the trend in most planning areas is to actually go in, in urban areas, is to go into denser building and control the size of lots and whatnot to combat sprawl and the associated costs with it. So that part of the plan I like. Now.
That's an interesting point.
Yeah.
And I'm going to make a point, and I stressed it the last time we had this discussion. The issue at the moment is whether it meets the requirements for the rezoning. All these other things are taken care of down the line. So that is our focus with regard to this rezoning request. Mr. Sylvester?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll be brief, but I just wanted to touch on, it's been some good discussion, but what Mr. Sanders had said earlier with respect to the differences, the fundamental differences in requirements between R1 and R2. I looked over the drawings as well, and what you have in R1 is the minimum lot area is 8,700 square feet. If you convert that to acres, that's around .2 acres, two tenths of an acre. And then for R2, we have 6,500 square feet is the minimum lot area, and that converts to about .15 acres. So I was encouraged to see that most, if not all, I don't think anyone, any got by me, I even had to magnify the page because by the time you got it down to a letter size, the numbers were pretty small. But every lot I could see was at least .2 acres, which actually satisfies the R1 requirement in terms of minimum lot area. That's my first point. My second point is the minimum lot width at the building line in feet is 70 feet for R1. It's 50 feet minimum in R2. As far as I could tell, every frontage was around 60-some-odd feet, which puts it really in the middle between the R1 and R2 requirements. I was encouraged to see that, I mean, they weren't packed as tightly in there, I used to call it packed in like sardines, but they weren't packed in as tightly as they could be. And in my opinion, that was a good balance because it makes, to Mr. Starland's point, that makes the lots more affordable. So we all would like as much elbow room as possible, but that comes at a cost. And I was encouraged to see that some of the metrics of the zoning change request actually meet the R1, you know, R1 minimums. So that was my take. But there's been some good discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Biden-Dyke?
Yes.
Just highlighting on Mr. Sylvester's comments and Mr. Bastancic, and to validate what Mr. Drusil had highlighted, when you do look at the proposed R2 designation, currently it would be closer to the R2 in total square footage per each of the parcels than it would be to R1 than it would be to R2. So that's a strong validator that it affects the affordability of the house, and that's what everyone's concerned with, they're buying a little less acreage. They can build an equivalent house and not have such a higher land cost. Plus, you must recognize, when you look at the patio home concept, at Deer Creek as an example, or Doornock Estates within our city, they're smaller than the proposed development here, and they sell like hotcakes. I mean, they're high-density, they're very, very small, zero lot lines, if you will, but they're affordable patio homes for both young, new homeowners and retired or semi-retired homeowners. And it's all about value and quality of the home, and this looks to be an exceptional development in a, as Ms. Warden highlighted, one of the highest traffic areas within the city right now. And people coming to shop at Bueller's from anywhere around town, they're going to be going up and down that road. So the additional homes, when you look at the peak periods of school and the flow currently to that corridor, plus the road improvements that we're looking at with the roundabouts and improving the flow, it seems to be a natural. It's on the edge of the city, it's a nice, flat corridor for ease of development, and it's going to have wonderful access to the city parks. And the affordability, the location, and the convenience, I think, is just an absolute positive for the city of Worcester that's much, much needed at this point in time because we don't have any patio homes, and the ones that do go for sale, or the smaller lot planned homes, go very quickly, and supply is virtually nonexistent. That's all I would have, Mr. President.
Anything else? Did I, Ms. here, I've got old ears. Density really isn't any difference than if it would be R1. Is that what I heard you say?
That's correct. Strictly a lot with issue.
Well, we'll consider ordinance number 2021-26 as having its first reading. We'll turn our attention to ordinance number 2021-27. It's again slated for three readings, and will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Ms. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2021-27, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to C2 community commercial for property located on Glen Avenue.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as we had heard previously in the second public hearing, we've got three parcels, and they're all on individual ordinances. The first parcel is 626 Glen Avenue, which in looking at the handout from the city, is the property that is, oh, you can see it on Glen Avenue there, it's on the south side. And as was stated previously, again, the request to go from RT to C2 is to help further develop the existing C2 properties that are right on West Liberty Street there and provide some additional buffering for the residents that are to the east on Glen Avenue for this particular property. The buffering for residential is 35 feet. So really, when you look at the lot size, they're not really gaining a lot with the fact that you've got to have a setback of 35 feet, but in any event, that's what our zoning code allows or requires, and at this point, the party with the request for the rezone understands that. So with that, I will again motion this to move to third and final reading.
All right. Motion by Mr. Sanders to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Kevin?
No.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
All right. The rules have been suspended. Do you have another motion for us?
I would motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Discussion?
Either one.
Myers.
Or Myers, I'm sorry. I was looking that way, and bad ear on this side. At least I recognize your faces. I don't recognize voices anymore.
Is there a plan for this? I mean, is there a concrete plan? Any idea, any notion? Have an idea?
Once again, I'm going to say the issue tonight is whether or not it meets the criteria for the rezoning.
Right.
And when we get too far afield, I think a couple of the counselors here would say we open ourselves to exposure of abusing our discretion.
So the properties that are showing on Glen Avenue, those have already been purchased? Have those been purchased?
Correct. FNB already owns all the properties that.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
How long have they been RT?
Since RT started, probably.
Probably since the origin of RT.
No one's seen fit, other than to put some mobile homes on it.
Right.
I think they were already there.
Do you have anything, Mr. Sanders?
I have nothing to add. I would motion to adopt.
Well, I know.
We did that.
We did that.
Oh, we did that.
I didn't know if anyone else.
Lots of both.
No.
It just seems like people have had opportunity to develop that in their residential, but where it sits, I just don't think that it merits someone wanting to invest much in terms of a residential mini-development is what it would come down to.
Yeah, and it abuts the commercial property, as you had said, and it's not really interfering with RT that I can see. But that doesn't cross the street into the old Worcester Trailer Park, though. But there are, that's a hill, right? That's a good-sized hill there.
Right. Historically, on this property, and I give the asterisk that some of the trailers have been removed, some of which are being in the process of being taken offline, but since we were removing a variety of mobile homes, trailers.
It's hard to see back there. It's hard to see exactly what's back there. It's treeed, and it's kind of hidden.
Pretty blighted before this is definite improvement.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Kevin?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2021-27 passes. We'll look at ordinance number 2021-28. This will again be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three reading. If you would, please, Ms. Apollo, read the title of this one.
Ordinance number 2021-28, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to C2 community commercial for property located on Wood Street.
All right. Mr. Sanders, your traveling road show continues, and I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is the second parcel of the property of the site that we've, that's shown in our packet, 348 Wood Street. And again, the reasons for the request are the same as they were for 626 Glen Avenue, and same situation occurs. I mean, this has been approved by Planning Commission. The owner is aware of the setback in buffering requirements, and at this point, they're, you know, they've asked for this request. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
All right. The rules are suspended. I look to you, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? I think probably we've discussed the same things that have been said about those other two parcels. That certainly applies the one here on, is it on?
Wood Street.
Wood Street.
It could be a hat-trick on behalf of Mr. Sanders this evening.
Could be. I think we vote no just to see what happens to the zoning map.
Seeing nothing from the council, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number 2021-28 passes. Look at that. Aren't we having fun? We've been in council for approximately 50 minutes, and they've gotten through three ordinances. They're just cruising right along. That brings us to ordinance number 2021-29, and this will be presented by, again, Mr. Sanders, and it looks like you'll be off the hook for the rest of the evening, Mr. Sanders, right? But before I get to you again, I would ask Ms. Apollo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2021-29, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to C2 community commercial for property located on West Larwell Street.
Again, Ms. Sanders, this, of course, is slated for three readings, but now I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is the last piece of the three parcels that are in this request to be rezoned from RT to C2. This is the parcel that's on West Larwell Street. And again, there's really nothing more that I can see to speak regarding it, other than I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing from the council, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, I look to you, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any other discussion, last comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, I look to you, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? I think probably we've discussed the same things that have been said about those other two parcels. That certainly applies the one here on, is it on?
Wood Street.
Wood Street.
Yep.
It could be a hat-trick on behalf of Mr. Sanders this evening.
Could be.
I think we vote no, just to see what happens to the zoning map.
Seeing nothing from the council, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, I look to you, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, I look to you, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt, please.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Discussion? Surprised you didn't ask our illustrious Chief of Police to model these vests.
It's out in the car, Mr. Bytenberg.
We're not going to do a demonstration, too, are we?
No catwalks tonight.
Okay. Well, seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-39 passes, and thank you all for going out and getting the money for this. And, you know, we want to protect our police officers in every way we can, and I see resolution number 2021-40 is another way that we'll be able to do that. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Mr. Sanders, it is budgeted, so no suspension of the rules will be necessary, but it is necessary to ask Mr. Apollo to please call the roll, or please, wishful thinking, wishful thinking, to please read the title.
Resolution number 2021-40, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase two Ford interceptors for use as police cruisers.
All right, Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is something that we do, the police department does on a regular rotation with their police cruisers, and if you will, recycling them, using newer to use as school resource officer cars, and buying new cars for the chief and the assistant. So with that being said, this, I believe I read that this is going to be it for the Crown Vics and the Chevy Caprice, is this adios for those?
So we will still have, this will be the last, doing, if you all approve this this evening, that will get the last Chevy Caprice out of the fleet, that'll be gone, and really the last Crown Vic that is, that's driven daily. We still have one old Crown Vic that the K-9 officers use just to scratch, basically hide narcotics on, and then we have a second Crown Vic that's a backup K-9 car, so if one of the actual K-9 SUVs goes down, they have something they can put the dog in, just to get the dog back and forth from home, but they're not patrolling in it. So the SRO car that's currently the Crown Vic, according to Matt out at City Garage, the underside is rusting pretty bad, brake lines are rusting, so it's time to move it on.
Yeah, how much money do you want to put in an emergency vehicle? So, all right, with that, I would go ahead and ask to pass resolution 2021-40.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Any further discussion? I always think it's important to have the best vehicles as possible for our police department. I've said this over the years, and I can say years now, that nothing looks worse to outsiders than when we have lousy-looking police cruisers, and more importantly, the officers inside are at risk. Mileage might not always be high, but the hours are phenomenally high, and I'm glad we have the means and abilities to rotate the new ones in and rotate the old ones. Although your police department is getting so young, I know some police departments who have some real old codgers, they hate seeing those Crown Vics go.
It's a young department, for sure, Mr. Bytenberg.
Because I know I've heard some police officers in other departments say, boy, if they could get another Crown Vic, they'd rather have one of those, but such, everything changes, so I guess this is another instance.
Well, the SUVs are lots easier to get personnel in and out of, whether it be the officer or the offender, a lot easier.
Yeah, I'm glad we can do that. I'm going to say this is one of the reasons we worked hard to get the income tax passed, so we could continue with these types of capital improvements as well. So seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-40 passes. We turn our attention to resolution 2021-41, this will be presented by Mr. Silvestri, it is a budgeted item. Ms. Apollo, would you please call, or would you please read the title?
I'll read the title. Resolution number 2021-41, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to contract with Pro-Tec for SCADA technology improvements and services for water and wastewater treatment facilities and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see before you this evening, we want to authorize our Director of Administration to purchase items of specialized technology, so that would waive the competitive bidding process for our waste recovery and reclamation facility. The SCADA system is the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. It's been a while since council has had a tour of both the waste recovery and reclamation facility and the water facility, but the central piece to managing water levels and flow of material for those, and specifically on the waste side, is this system. And I remember talking with our manager, Nathan Coyle, a while back, and they were doing their best to work with the software system that they had, but he said it's just going to come a time when it's outdated, and we need to update the software and get some new hardware so that it's compatible with Windows 10. So the current hardware and software are no longer compatible. This would include a server mount at the facility and backups to the IT network. So also, in the same way, this system communicates with lift stations in terms of levels, to make sure we don't have overflows and issues and problems such as that. So because we were on track to reach the 70,000 expenditure mark, this is coming before council this evening, and if there are no questions, I would move.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? You know what I miss annually? Our wiffle balls. We don't buy those anymore, do we?
Very highly, but only every so many years.
We don't have as many stripping towers, do we?
Correct, and we are allowed to buy.
Yeah, okay. That was just an aside, I always liked getting a wiffle ball now, and then.
The meeting was running a little too fast for him, so he had to interject something.
We've been washing and reusing, Mr. President, the efficiency of tax dollars.
It reminded me of, as they said in my Cousin Vinny, of my ute when I played wiffle ball. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes, thank you.
Resolution number 2021-41 passes. We'll look at resolution number 2021-42, this will be presented by Ms. Warden, it is a budgeted item, will not require suspension of the rules. But before that, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number 2021-42, a resolution authorizing expenditure of funds for mowing, debris removal, dumpster repairs, property maintenance, and other cleanup services with Jimmy's Maintenance and Law Care, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. So this resolution is to authorize payment to Jimmy's Maintenance and Law Care for, as Ms. Apollo said, mowing, debris removal, property maintenance and cleanup, dumpster repairs, and other related services. The city contracts with this company to mow multiple public properties spanning various city divisions. The cost for these services is under the $50,000 threshold per division, however, the cumulative cost will be more than the $50,000. The actually estimated cost is about $160,000 for the year, and that's to one vendor, which necessitates approval from council. City management says that they're happy with the work that Jimmy's Maintenance and Law Care has been providing, and has requested to waive any additional bidding requirements. When initial quotes were solicited for these contracts, Jimmy submitted the lowest bid. However, it has been brought to my attention recently that this business is operating out of a residence without proper zoning certificate, and that there are commercial vehicles, trailers, and other materials stored improperly on the property, which is in violation of city zoning laws. So I plan to give the business owner the opportunity to correct these measures and bring the property into compliance, and therefore, I'd like to keep this on first reading this evening, please.
Mr. Benton?
I'd like to provide an update on the use of the home, so Mr. Thomas was contacted today by our property maintenance inspector, he was told he needed a zoning certificate for home occupation, and then also that occupation, home occupation does not allow for the storage of trailers or materials on the site. So today, he submitted and received approval of his zoning certificate, and the lot has been brought back to residential character, there's no more trailers on the site. So at this time, he is in compliance with the code, and we'll continue to monitor it for compliance as well.
I would.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you for, and thank you for the information you provided earlier to me as well today. I would, I would still like to keep this on, I mean, I don't see any reason that this needs to be an emergency, he's still, he's still receiving his contract.
It's budgeted, so I think technically you would table it until.
Yeah, that doesn't require.
Until we bring it back.
I do have a question, I mean, has he performed these services already?
He has performed these services up till now.
Up to the $160,000?
No.
That we're asking for?
They're anticipating it going up to that level.
Okay, so at this point, what we're, I want to make, I just want to make clear, with us not moving this forward, he's not getting paid?
So I understand he's been paid for what he's done so far, but he has a continuing contract for all the citywide mowing, for all of our property maintenance cleans up, you know, when we have cat houses, when we have tires that somebody throws in a dumpster, if we have, like we did last year, when Waste Management failed to pick up garbage, that's who picked up garbage for us. So downtown clean sweeps, when they go through and do some, so what happens if it doesn't pass, is all that stops, because we can't spend any more money.
So.
What we did, we said, okay, we anticipate, we're going to go beyond that 50, we need to get, because all the different divisions had been using them together, so because it goes over 50, we will not be able to spend any more money.
And we're at the 50, I think we're, are we at the $50,000 mark already?
It doesn't matter, yes, we're beyond that, because the individual contracts, you know, the individual might not be over 50, but accumulated, yes, we've gone beyond the 50th where we came, we saw that coming, so we came to you. So all of those things will quit, as Tim indicated in his memo to council, you know, we have a hard time finding someone to do a lot of that property maintenance and those kinds of things.
What about our property maintenance department?
I'm sorry?
What about our property maintenance department?
They can do some of that, but we don't have the ability to go out and clean up tires and to go into cat houses and literally take dumpsters full of things out of there, you know, people to do that. We have inspectors, we don't have the people that go and do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and I understand it's dirty work, and it's hard to find people that are willing to do it, especially for whatever we're.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what will happen, so things will not happen, you know.
Okay, well, there needs to be some sort of guarantee, because I don't want to set the precedent that we're going to do contractual business with people who perhaps are not abiding by our laws.
I think the other thing in the memo from what both Tim and Andrew mentioned was, we're aware of, they've had a couple of issues, and they've always been responsive to fix those up.
With the exception of their own property. So we're talking about two different, we're talking about their rental properties, which I understand they've been very responsive and supposedly gone over and taken care of some problems, but with their own personal property, this is something that I have heard on multiple occasions, that it's been a complaint for the neighbors, and.
We're aware of that.
Right, and so my concern then is, okay, is he going to clean this up today, and then in two weeks after, you know, he's gotten his next check, are they going to be back there? And I'm not assuming that he's trying to take advantage, but that's happened in the past, and he's apparently made comments that once the city's off its back, he'll move them back, so if we just need, we just need to monitor the situation, I mean.
We're doing that.
I've just been aware, too, that he's not the best at maintaining his own properties as rentals either. I hear it a lot.
So we weren't aware of that? I mean, Tim can answer that probably better than I can.
I just don't think it's a good idea to hire someone to take care of the city's property when they're not willing to take care of their own. That's, that flies in the face of sense.
Like I said, I can refer to Tim on the memo that we sent out and his investigation into that.
I think.
Tim, do you have a moment to come up to him?
I think, Mr. Kevin, that is an accurate point, if that is the case. I mean, we certainly don't want to be doing business with someone who isn't compliant, and I don't think that's the case with Mr. Thomas.
Really? I look out my bedroom window, and I see trees this tall growing in a gutter that he owns. I eyeball it every day.
Okay.
So I don't know where you're coming from.
Well, I know that he owns between 60 and 70 properties, and when we've had issues, he's taken care of them right away. I have no outstanding complaints, I'm not aware of an issue with the property you're talking about.
Okay.
If you let me know, I'll let him know, and I would, I would almost guarantee, if And I would, I would almost guarantee if we ask him to repair that, he would be on that immediately. Because that's been the response that we get. He does own some properties on the rental scale that's on the lower end of costs for the properties and for the rents. He has invested a lot of money in our community. We need, we need responsible landlords to do this. It's a, it's a very valuable service. We have folks that depend on these types of rentals in our community, and he does a pretty good job of it, I will say. So, you know, I don't think it's fair to characterize him as a slumlord or anything like that.
I never said that.
I know, I'm just saying, someone would draw that conclusion. You didn't say that. But, you know, he's, he's, does a pretty good job with his properties. So, you know, let me know about that issue you're having, and I can certainly address it with him.
And back to what she said, I had, you know, the commercial trucks in the, on the Pittsburgh Avenue all last summer. And he is indeed running a business out of his home, which is not, it's not in an RT neighborhood.
Yeah, again, as Mr. Dutton mentioned, you know, he has applied for home occupancy, which you can run a business if you meet the rules. And part of that is you cannot park your trucks there. You cannot park trailers there. You're absolutely correct. And he does own a property where he can park those trailers. What's happened is he's brought them home loaded with equipment, and he's parked them where he shouldn't have, maybe out of convenience because the next morning he's going to be leaving for a job, rather than park them in the area where he should be parking them. And we discussed that with him. I think he's very well aware of the need to do that and to stop parking those trailers at his property. So I would expect him to be compliant. If he's not, certainly we'll follow up and make sure that he does that because you're right, that was a problem there. We did have complaints, and we don't, we don't want to allow that there.
Right.
But I just say, as to his character, he's been really easy to deal with. So he, as was mentioned, we had a problem where someone threw tires in a dumpster. I pick up the phone, I call him. Within a half hour, he has someone out there, and they're crawling inside the dumpster, throwing the tires out, loading them up in a trailer, and getting rid of them in a proper manner. So to find people to do this is very difficult. Or, as was mentioned by Mr. Montgomery, you know, we have people who have a mound of cat litter, you know, three foot tall in their driveway that's smelling up the neighborhood. He'll bring a trailer out, he'll shovel that up, he'll clean it out and get rid of it. And so, you know, if there's other contractors that are willing to do that, you know, we'll, we'll give them a try. But I tell you, we've had very good success with, with Mr. Thomas. It's similar to some of the other work we do. We boarded up a house the other day. We had three police cruisers with us. They pulled out probably 10 or 12 individuals that were squatting in the house, and a contractor boarded up the windows. Now, how many contractors do you think I have to go through till I get someone who's willing to do that? To bring this crew, be there with the police, wait till they clear the house, go in the house, and board up the windows according to our code? It's not, it's not an easy thing to do to find contractors to do this work.
No, I would ask, I would ask, Mr. Mayor, is it time to hire some more people for maintenance then? Rather than delegate this to people that some other folks may not have a good, good feel about?
I do not believe that that is the case here. We review our personnel and our personnel needs on a yearly basis, and you're coming into budget time. We do have some requests that are going to be coming forward in the budget, but we do take our budget very seriously. We need to stay within the means of a city that we have the funding for. And if you have a service line that can do the services that you've been discussing here this evening and can do them responsibly according to the people in our structure that work with them, that many times is a better way to go than to have people on payroll that you have to pay all the benefits and all of that to go along with, so.
On a variable cost basis versus a fixed cost basis, so as required.
Well, I hope that this results in him actually following through. Yes, Mr. Sandic?
Joel, I have a quick question. If we pass this tonight, does this contract just go through to the first of the year? Is this going to be just for the next four months?
Correct.
So we're just, we're just looking to get through the end of the year right now, basically?
It involves the, you know, all the vendors.
Right, right.
No, that's too much.
So if we pass this late?
I mean, we get all those quotes every year, so we'll be looking, you know?
So if we pass this, it'd be basically a short-term contract anyway?
Right, so for example, if he doesn't, if he doesn't follow through and continue to maintain his properly, or property adequately, you're saying there are other bidders out there?
We would bid it out, and hopefully, you know, there'll be, you know, there were more. We've got a couple quotes, and they were more. Mowing was quite a bit more. We'd absolutely look, you know, if he's not complying, then yes, that's absolutely something we're taking into consideration.
Right, I mean, I just feel like it's important that we, that we make that point. I mean, I hate to beat the dead horse tonight, but at the same time, this is something that we can't just take lightly and allow vendors to come into our community and throw away our laws, basically.
Ms. Warden, can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
If we pass, according to Joel, if we pass this tonight, it was just a four-month contract, basically, just to get through to the end of the year. Could we compromise? Oh, it wouldn't really be a compromise, but, you know, that would, in four months, we'll have a pretty good idea if he's going to comply. But the city kind of needs it right now. And so in my mind, it would be just a short-term thing, and we'll see how it goes. But to expedite things for the city, that sounds like something we really should pass soon, today, is that what you're saying?
That would allow interrupted service, things like downtown clean sweeps.
If it was going to be for like another year, I would maybe feel differently about it. But I think four months would give us a pretty good idea. And then if it's not looking like it's working out, we won't, we won't have to renew the contract the first of the year or the next council.
We will be passing along your comments, absolutely, to Jimmy's Maintenance.
Well, over the next, over the next two weeks, what's the, I mean, what do you guys have on schedule for him to do?
Oh, we have weekly mowings. We have clean sweeps coming up. We have high-mowing that we contract with him as well. All those services we keep quotes on every year, Jimmy, that happens to be-
I understand, but I mean specifically, okay, what is he not going to be able to do that we need to have him do in the next two weeks?
Mowing, the weekly mowing. So if it stops, then that means PPM staff will have to pick up the, pick up the mowers and the weed eaters and start doing that. And so that, that just, we just have a limited staff right now with some people being off and, and other work being, needing to be done. So we'll suffer, that's for sure.
And just to be clear, he's in compliance. There's no outstanding complaints on any of his properties, and he's now got the permit to operate his own business, and he's moved his trailer. So he's basically done everything?
He's applied for the permit.
It's been approved.
Obviously.
I'm not aware of a single outstanding violation on any of his nearly 70 properties in town.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that being said, we wouldn't want to inconvenience PPM, so let's move this forward. But yeah, we'll just all kind of keep an eye on the situation going forward and make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I, I understand what Ms. Warden is saying in this, and I don't entirely disagree with her from the standpoint that, you know, I don't drive by that particular part of town very frequently, but I know that now that I saw the photo and know where it is, anybody that has gone by there knows that this has been an issue in terms of there's stuff sitting in that driveway that's not supposed to be there. So while I don't want to be the company, or I don't want to be the city that's going to, I don't want to say renig, but be unnecessarily judicious with monies that we've already contracted with, I think ultimately we needed to do a better job as a city to pay attention to that and get on this guy before now. Because, I mean, actually, what I feel is we're kind of being put in the spot that we're being the bad guys in this, and actually, this isn't our issue. We're just the ones that've got to approve this, this legislation. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, well said.
Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll for the motion, on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
No.
Okay. The motion or the resolution 2021-42 passes. And I should just point out that, and Mr. Long's still here, so he can validate there. When there, usually there's a contractor's problems, you usually give a person an opportunity to cure before pulling the rug out from them. So I think at best, that's what we did. And I certainly agree with the issue that if it's not continued to be rectified, then we'd be crazy to renew his contract here in four months. I certainly understand the displeasure and being upset with someone who we contract with and doesn't comply with the-
I just don't think we should reward bad behavior, that's all, that's easy.
Okay, we'll look at resolution number 2021-43. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is a budgeted item, but before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, would you please call, or would you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number 2021-43. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds for welding services with McCune Welding and allowing for immediate enactment.
Okay, Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a very similar situation involving McCune Welding, whereas PPM Division, Recreation Division, Utility Divisions have utilized McCune Welding for various welding services, including pool repairs, grit dumpsters, leaf boxes, benches, and other miscellaneous welding projects. And I will note that each time that that is awarded, it is solicited in terms of competitive quotes, and McCune consistently receives the awards and provides the exceptional service and maintains their property impeccably well. So that being noted, we are approaching the $50,000 in excess expenditures before the year end, and there are still some additional works that will need repaired. And in positioning for that and to ensure McCune Welding is compensated for the work that they do on an ongoing competitive review process, they would like to have some additional funds allocated to provide payment and to also exceed the potential threshold of $50,000. Very straightforward from a supplier who consistently knows the facility's standard operating procedures and mode of operation, a valued resource. Again, a variable resource versus a fixed cost that has been very responsive. So being that this is a budgeted item, and also is a competitive bid review process, I would ask that we go ahead and approve the additional expenditures to provide payment to McCune Welding.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Anything further? I assume welders are in short supply, so it's nice to have one that has done good work and quality work for us and one that we can rely on and maintains their property. Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-43 passes. We'll look at resolution number 2021-44. This will be presented by Ms. Warden. It is a budgeted item, will not require suspension of the rules. Before I get to you, Ms. Warden, would you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number 2021-44. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds for preventative maintenance work for paved services and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This resolution is similar to the previous two in that it seeks to authorize payment to one of our vendors. This is Crites and Sun paving for preventative maintenance services such as crack sealing and seal coating, asphalt surfaces on roadways, parking lots, and bike trails. They also provide concrete repairs on curbs and gutters, streets, parking lots, sidewalks, and other areas owned by the city. Our Public Property Maintenance Division solicited quotes for the work and selected Crites and Sun, with whom they're happy with the work that they're providing. To date, the city has encumbered $32,000 for services from Crites and Sun and expects to see that cost increase to approximately $70,000 by year's end. As this is over the $50,000 threshold for the city to pay a single vendor, it will require authorization from council. Before we move forward with that, I did notice that the company is named throughout this resolution as Crites and Suns. I believe it should actually just be Crites and Sun with no S. I don't think that requires any type of amendment. It's probably a typographical error, but I know that, I've thought that in the past, and it's been a hassle. So I just wanted to point that out. Is everything good with that? I don't know whether it's got an S on the end or not. That's how it came across in the-
We'll get one more.
Oh, okay. It was when I, when I looked it up, looking at their address, it-
Mr. Dunning is admitting to the slight error, so.
Okay, I mean, like, so there's only one- Just, the other one isn't involved, so I don't know. So we don't need to make any changes to that, though, based on, okay. So, all things considered, I move to place this resolution on, oh, wait. Yeah, I move to adopt this resolution.
All right, motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bastancic. Anything further? I'm sure we've been busy since we've done a lot of road maintenance this year, so. We're going to keep that going while the weather's still good. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2021-44 passes. We'll turn our attention to resolution number 2021-45. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is scheduled for three readings. It's also scheduled for Mr. Apollo to read the title.
Resolution number 2021-45. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a mutual termination agreement with Brassfond USA Corp. For CRA incentives permitted through ordinance number 2012-10 for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, we're all very familiar with the expansion of Brassfond and their 50% 10-year abatement that was originally initiated in ordinance 2012-10, whereas they invested $700,000 for a facility expansion with two full-time jobs promised. $700,000 for a facility expansion with two full-time jobs promised. Their business expanded and grew, and in 2013, there was an expansion at the facility, another $800,000 expansion that went under the CRA, and they went from two to 11. Although they were really only required to retain the two, they were forecasting business was strong, the economy was strong, and they seemed to be going in the proper direction. And again, I highlight, they've invested $1.5 million in a facility. With a recent economic downturn, their business has slowed dramatically. They're continuing to maintain the facility. They have one current full-time equivalent at their site, recognizing short-term, that they don't anticipate their business to improve in our region or in North America. As we all know, they're an international company. They've been very conscientious and acknowledged the fact that they would like to abandon their CRA for the balance of the two years. And I want to highlight that over that two-year period, the savings is somewhere in the $23,000 annual reduction, because again, they had, unlike a lot of companies, requested a lower abatement, if you will, or CRA request of 50%, which was very reasonable. So in rounding numbers, their savings is about $12,000 a year. To date, they've gotten somewhere in the neighborhood of about $90,000 relief, but their business was strong, dynamics have changed. And it's unfortunate that we have a company now that doesn't know their long-term viability, not only in the city of Worcester, but in the new market expansion that they were trying to focus on in the US of A. This was their, you know, North American headquarters, if you will. So the verdict is still out. It's very forthright of them to come in and say, hey, we abandon. If the economy changes, we don't expect you to reinstate the balance of the reasonable nominal incentive. So, that being considered and acknowledging the financial disarray of the economy today and the hard times that there have fallen on, this evening, I would like to request that we, as in the attached resolution, will highlight our acceptance of their abandonment of their CRA officially. So, and that's the resolution draft that we were proposed. I'm imagining that will be forthcoming at the next meeting, based on our decision tonight to abandon the Resolution 2021 XX draft that was attached, as your...
That was one of the things that was the ears.
Okay, so by us voting on this this evening, we can, of course, make that decision and set that course. So, that being noted, I mean, we do have the option of clawing back the last eight years, but again, recognizing in good faith that they made every effort to make this a success, and they have a considerable investment in the property that's going to be ongoing now at a higher rate. And I guess the only uncertainty there is what they might do with that $1.6 million investment that they have out off Long Row. Any questions?
Mr. Malley, you know, this went in front of Growth Corp., correct?
Worcester Growth Corporation?
For its initial approval, yes. Worcester Growth does not review projects after making that initial recommendation, so when the project was amended a few years ago, that recommendation came through our TIRC. We're about ready to head up our TIRC for this year, so you'll be seeing those notices shortly. But as we are doing that, when we see deficiencies, we reach out to companies ahead of time to try to understand a little bit more about that deficiency, plans of action to fix that, and that's how this came about. So at this point, this is a request from the company to seek a mutual termination. The benefit for the city is it provides us with a clear path going forward in terms of not having obligations to report to the state furthermore. Additionally, direct to the city, there's approximately about a $1,300 tax benefit. The company would forego an estimated $23,000 for years 2021, the current year that we're in, so this would go back to January 1st of this year, as well as the following year, 2022.
That's a very important point. The city's impact is roughly $1,400 a year, based on the millage rate of the residential, or the commercial property and the abatement.
But I thought I remembered a discussion that they were hoping to maintain the building and hopefully with the repurposing that they might be able to bring more people in. I mean, they're not abandoning the site.
Correct, yeah. To be clear, we have some other visibility on the property as well. We know that this property is being occupied daily, or at least during the work week. And the company, we had an opportunity, and we may have had some other discussions, but we were able to meet with the leadership of the company, which is now based in Sao Paulo, work through the situation. They expressed that they would be very grateful at the opportunity to have a mutual release, understanding that, of course, as Mr. Ansel mentioned, there is a possibility of clawback as well. Our intents and purposes as staff, we would recommend the mutual termination. Is this, this has been a case of a company that has made an investment in the community that has strived to continue operations here. It still hasn't, still has a relationship with our city. They are still investing staff time here. This is not like the case of other exemptions where the city of Worcester has rightly so clawed back on three tax exemptions so far. Each of those were cases where companies completely abandoned the city of Worcester and had no staffing here and no further investment interests here. That's not the case here. This is a company that does not have a strategy for immediate regrowth, but had expressed their intent in the future when things improve that they could regrow their staff base. So to be clear, we have an ongoing relationship with this company and our business community and ongoing investment.
Can I ask one question? Just to be clear, since the last time council amended the agreement, 2017, they've only been in noncompliance two years.
Correct.
And you mentioned clawback, eight.
That's very important.
It's only been two years that they've been, so...
So they were driving income tax and meeting the projected goals. If we remember the CRA review last year or the year before, they were compliant. Last year was the first year they hit the radar screen as being below their projected staffing levels. So, two out of the eight years, they were compliant, and the last two realizing and recognizing that the economy was flat as it could be, they weren't going to achieve it, they've requested mutual termination.
How do you think this might affect future CRA abatements?
I think that, me?
Someone.
Well...
Yeah, I mean, he can go first, and I have my thoughts, certainly.
I think we've been very business fair in our approach. I think that the city of Worcester proves that it is business-friendly, but at the same time, business accountable as well. We have, as I mentioned before, clawed back on three separate tax incentive agreements, when companies willfully chose to relocate staff and resulted in layoffs in our city. In fact, they've clawed back over $1 million over the course of those proceedings. That's not the case here, where this is a company that has not abandoned the city. This is a company that has decided that it wants to continue to make an investment here. It still has staff here in the city of Worcester who are paying income tax to our city. They are asking for the ability to forfeit the remaining $23,000 approximately that's on their contract with us. So I think what this does here by explaining that, you know, we have the ability to work with companies, but we have a history of accountability, I think that shows that we're, again, very business-friendly, but we do also demand accountability.
And Mark, here's an abbreviated summary of that. It's up to council, each specific situation, and they, it's went both ways, where we've made clawbacks for decisive reasons and we've waived others for mitigating circumstances beyond companies' control. But the cool thing about it, it's always up to council when these issues come up during the CRA and abatement review process, and also when a company would make a mutual request for termination. So each one is evaluated on its own merit. And the thing that's really most significant about this, it's insignificant dollars to the city of Worcester, and we get to make that decision. It's roughly $1,300 a year in terms of our portion of the CRA. Now, it impacts the schools, and it impacts the county, but our financial impact is really quite negligible. I really feel disheartened for the company out of Sao Paulo, Brazil, who made a $2 million investment in our community and was not successful. That being noted, I will motion to suspend the rules of council this evening and move this piece of legislation to third and final reading, resolution 2021-45.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rule?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? So basically, these last two years are go pay their full freight.
Correct.
Hopefully, they will find a rebranding or repurposing that will bring more people in, so. And hopefully, they will look to Worcester as being, as you say, business-friendly and fair.
And the president did extend their thanks for having the city explore this opportunity. They were very grateful and did want to convey that we were told thank you several times on that.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2021-45 passes. Resolution number 2021-46 will be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number 2021-46, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
All right, Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, and again, it's slated for three readings.
Yes, this is just very straightforward. This is a consecutive process, whereas the summary amounts required by the general property tax is approved by the Budget Commission and county auditor's estimated tax rates. And we can see the three funds referenced, and the millage reference, General Fund, $2,311,700, 5.2%, Fireman's Fund, $195,400.30%, and Police Pension, $195.4. Be put in the budget. It's the projected millage and approximate rates for the 2022 fiscal year. So, we do this every year, and it's just part of the budgetary process of which the county plays a key role. So that being noted, and since this is a repetitive annual, unless there's something that startles council members in terms of the projected millages and the dollars involved, I will motion to waive the rules of council and move this to third and final reading this evening.
I'm going to say, even if they are stunned and astounded, you go, motion to suspend the rules, right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Are you shocked or not, or is it pretty straightforward? Do we do this every year? Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-46, and Mr. Doherty would probably agree with me, even if we disagreed with this, there isn't much we can do about it. So it's just the fact that we looked at it and approved it, so. Ordinance number 2021-30, this will be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is slated for three readings. Would you please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2021-30, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yeah, what wonderful news. Anytime the city receives unanticipated funds, we have to approve the appropriation into our general fund, and this is one such situation where the American Rescue Plan Act was established to assist in the coronavirus fiscal recovery fund, both at the state and local levels. Our release or tranche for the first go-around, it's allocated over a two-year period. As we are all aware, Worcester will receive $2,764,799.46, of which we will receive our first appropriation from the unappropriated balance of COVID-19 Response Fund, Fund Number 124, into our general fund in the amount of $1,382,399.73. So, great news to have those funds that are so vitally needed to assist in reimbursing the city for outstanding services and materials and safety wear and so forth to battle COVID. So we are all very aware of this, and based on the understanding and the final figures being identified, I would like to motion to suspend the rules of council and move receipted these funds into our general fund ASAP.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin. Hard to turn down almost $1.4 million.
I'm not turning it down.
Seeing nothing else and the fact that we'll accept this, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance number 2021-30 is adopted. Ordinance number 2021-31 will be presented by Ms. Warden. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Ms. Warden, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2021-31, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of property to the Wayne Center for the Arts and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is an exciting ordinance. It seeks to transfer land from the Walnut, or the Walnut Street Park property from city ownership to the Wayne Center for the Arts. The Arts Center has successfully secured funding through grants and perhaps other channels I'm not aware of to expand their facilities and provide community amenities to the Walnut and Grant Street neighborhoods. Some of these amenities will include an art park, playground, a sculpture park, multipurpose basketball court, a performing arts space, and additional facilities for camps, workshops, and after-school programs. The land transfer will lift the maintenance responsibilities and costs off of the city and will give the Arts Center the ability to improve the surrounding property and nearby neighborhoods. To bring this park area up to current standards, it is estimated that it might cost the city taxpayers more than $125,000 with annual maintenance costs between $2,500 and $3,000. And then through these grant funds, the Wayne Center for the Arts has secured a $375,000 grant to help cover the costs associated with these plans. The Performing Arts Pavilion would allow for a wide range of entertainment opportunities, including music and theater, an art park playground...
I just wanted to speak a little bit for the director, James Fox. He was planning on being here and then had an unexpected conflict, so that's the only reason he's not here, but he's very excited. He's the one that prepared the nice report that you see there.
Oh, okay. It is a very nice report.
It probably should be.
And Mr. Byten dyke, you might remember from one of our previous Let's Chat sessions, a young lady by the name of Allison Allison, hard to forget her name. She was interested in perhaps putting in an art installation that reflected, I guess, the, I don't want to say the Black Lives Matter movement, but basically represented the African-American community. And I think, I would love for her, if she's watching, which would be shocking, but I would love to put her in touch with Mr. Fox and perhaps have something in the sculpture garden that they are hoping to install on this property.
That's a great idea. Like I said, I would hardly endorse her efforts. Anything further?
Good idea. That's great.
Seeing none, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the role on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the role on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Are you shocked or not, or is it pretty straightforward? Do we do this every year? Seeing nothing else, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules have been suspended. I do turn to you again, Ms. Warden, for another motion.
Thank you. I motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
And the rules have been suspended. I do turn to you again, Ms. Warden, for another motion.
Thank you. I motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further questions? How much is the lease?
Zero dollars.
Zero dollars? Okay. Just double checking. Sometimes free, free, free is sometimes not so free, free, free. Anything else? Seeing then, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Good night, everyone in the audience, too. Thank you for attending.
And anyone at home that watches this and stays through it all, God bless you.